...meeting of South County Council for Tuesday, July 11. Please get your certification because we all stand and may stand under oath.
That is great.
After the invocation, ma'am.
I pledge allegiance to the
No.
At the
Prayer first.
We do pray. First time. No problem. Let us pray. Our dear, kind heavenly Father, we do acknowledge you as the one in whom we live, who would have our being. We thank you for everyone who is present as we begin this meeting this evening. We invite your presence and ask that you dwell among us, that we will be able to go through the agenda items that you have prepared for us. Thank you for allowing us to be your servants and help us in everything we do will be pleasing in your sight. Help us to do unto others as we would have them to do unto ourselves. These are our blessings. We thank you and ask in your name, amen.
Tonight, I will lay down in our pledge of allegiance by retired U.S. Air Force Reverend Reverend J. Innewood.
Yes.
Who served our country from March nineteen seventy-two to March nineteen ninety-two. Twenty years of service. Thank you. She served as an administrative specialist. She currently lives in council, county council district one. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Please meet us in the
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any change in the
There are no changes.
For two, that is the most important thing, the government approved their agenda in the discussion. And in all the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we should approve our minutes from our minute twenty-two, June twenty-seventh, twenty-two.
So, sir.
The minute we properly second, that we approve our minutes in the discussion. And in all the favor, please say aye. Next, I have the agenda. Land use plan is RZ twenty-three-ten, Ms. Ruben.
Good evening. Helen Reekman for planning staff. Our first request is RZ twenty-three-ten at thirteen fifty south Higginson. This is an approximate location, because this is an approximately twenty-seven acre piece of land that has yet to be developed. So it doesn't actually have a formal address assigned to it. That's just the address range for the property. The applicant is Los Angeles Investments, being represented by Paul Weiss, who is here this evening as the property owner. Our first request is to rezone approximately twenty-six point six acres of property from residential six to general residential. This is the acre trapped in question. It's actually located between the Sherwood Forest subdivision on the southeast and the Iris Winds Mobile Home Park on the northwest. This chunk of property is actually zone residential six, but it is part of a larger acreage tract that is zone general residential to the southeast of the property. One of the reasons that this is being requested for rezoning to general residential is because the applicant has a potential purchaser who is interested in possibly developing even expansion to the existing Iris Winds Mobile Home Park or create a brand-new standalone mobile home park subdivision or development of subdivision. But in our historic zoning districts, we don't allow manufactured homes. The only two zoning districts that permit those uses is general commercial and general residential. Fundamentally, others that allow manufactured homes, R six for GR zoning districts have exactly the same use. One of the things that we're trying to look at when we look at rezonings in the county is the availability of sewer and water. Because of proximity of this particular site to the city of Sumter and because the city does have infrastructure running through and around this property, it is possible to potentially tap into those systems. Those conversations have happened with city public services. It will cost significant investment on the potential developer's part to provide that site with sewer service, but it would be necessary for this site to be successfully developed as an industrial home park. The other thing that we look at, one of the potential future development on the property is the presence of environmental factors. In this particular instance, the national weapons, weapon's inventory, which was done in the nineteen seventies and eighties, indicates that there may be freshwater forced to weapons on this property. That doesn't necessarily mean that they are present, but it is an indication that a formal weapons delineation will be necessary to be done to the property in order to determine its development potential. The pursuit of the rezoning is being done because in the great scheme of things, that is actually the least expensive part of the process. And if the rezoning entitlement is not in place, then there is really no purpose in going forward with a weapons delineation on the property. This property looks like today, it is a fairly large stand of timber. It's a mix of hardwoods and pines, and it's a fairly robust buffer between Iris Winds and the adjacent residential subdivision. While the ready rezoned request, you look at the compatibility with the comprehensive land use plan. In this particular instance, it is in the suburban development planning area, which does allow a mix of housing types at varying densities. So the request to rezone this property to general residential is in general line with the comprehensive plan. At this point, the planning commission does recommend approval for the request, and I'm happy to answer any questions which you may have.
Move approval for three. It's been moved and properly seconded, and we have first reading on RZ twenty-three-ten in the discussion. Hearing in all in favor of first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say, first reading of RZ twenty-three-ten is approved. Next item on the agenda is ordinance amendment, ordinance amendment, I'm sorry, twenty-two dash twelve.
This is actually being brought forward by planning staff on behalf of the county. This is to convert the industry, industry references or how to classify land use, land uses in the zone ordinance from the standard investor classification code, which hasn't been used since the nineteen eighties anywhere outside of our county, to the NICS code or the North American Industrial Classification System. This will amend several parts of the zone ordinance, in particular articles one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and ten. Some of it is to remove duplicative text and others is to provide clarification, but by and large, this is to amend when the SIC codes, to NICS codes. This is a little background. While this conversion is being made, staff has identified areas of Article one and Article seven that currently have references to the city of Sumter and not just the Sumter County. For those of you that have been around long enough, you may recall that our original ordinance was adopted initially in nineteen ninety-nine. And at that time, the city and county ordinances were almost virtually the same document with minor deviations. And so when they adopted those documents, they actually had references in the city ordinance to Sumter County and they had references in the county ordinance to the city of Sumter. So we did this amendment with the city of Sumter earlier this year when we removed the duplicative references to the county from the cities code. And we are seeking to do that with the county code now, to just make things clearer to anybody that's working within these codes to understand that the city of Sumter doesn't have jurisdiction over anything happening in Sumter County. More of Sumter County have jurisdiction over what happens inside the city. The difference is between the NICS and the SIC codes. The NICS code is managed by the U.S. Census Bureau. The SIC code can only be developed by the Office of Management and Budget. The NICS code kind of came into effect in nineteen ninety-seven around the time of the North American Free Trade Agreement. It was an effort to standardize industries across the U.S., Canada, and Mexico, and it replaced the SIC code. So we haven't updated that code since nineteen eighty-seven, and we are now working on the twenty-twenty-two version of the NICS code in our business licensing processes. In twenty-twenty, the South Carolina General Assembly actually standardized this legislation across the state, which basically made every community that has a business license, classified those business licenses using the NICS code. And since the dust has settled from that, we are now transitioning from the SIC code in our zone ordinance to parallel the NICS code within the, what we're doing with business licenses as well as the zone ordinance. There is a hierarchical structure in the NICS code. It's pretty similar to the SIC code. It is a two-to-six-digit system. It's got five levels of detail. The first two numbers you see up there, which is the twenty-three, are actually the major sector, whether it's manufacturing, retail, professional services. They each have their own two-digit code. The subsector is that third digit, so it refines that major district. Then an industry group which is yet a subsector of a larger subsector. And then the fifth digit is the industry code. And if you get all the way to the sixth digit, those are only used by individual countries, so they could be different from U.S., Canada, and Mexico. By and large, we have made every effort to stay within the four and five-digit range when we have made changes to the code. We actually did that by using our crosswalk system from the SIC and NICS, which was provided by the federal government. It's a pretty awesome undertaking. We have over two-hundred-and-fifty permitted and conditional uses in the zoning ordinance. And we had to match them up because means have changed from industry to industry since the nineteen eighties to today. That full review, review of classifications actually taken by the planning commission can be of the whole. So we did a pretty extensive work session with them to make sure that we're all in agreement, that we did classify these correctly because of many changes. And then we made adjustments to exhibit five, which is a table in Article three. So the proposed amendments in the mid-ready, we've already removed all text references in each zoning district sound in Article three B to three O. When we say text references, we mean that right now, we have the zoning district name, we have a list of permitted uses, a list of conditional uses, a list of special exception uses. And then we have uses listed in exhibit five also. So there's two different places where uses are listed in the ordinance, but because of changes that have happened over the years, there's conflicts between the two. So for clarification purposes, we're going straight to just using exhibit table, which is exhibit five, where all of the NICS references are listed. And each use category has either a blank, meaning it's not allowed, a C for conditional use, a P for permitted, or an S for special exception. So we basically got somewhere about sixty-five pages in Article three to about thirty-five pages just by limiting that to duplicative text. We're also removing exhibit four, which is a table specifically for residential districts, and we're moving it and merging it to exhibit five. So every zoning district will be listed on exhibit five. You won't have to go multiple places. We're also going to be updating the SIC code references in our Article four, five, six, eight, and ten to the NICS codes. And then other changes throughout the ordinance are for clarity and consistency, and the ease of use back to where we're talking about the city and county references. Things that we have seen that didn't make sense, that looked like describer, describers errors from previous iterations, we're cleaning all of that up. Some things that are outside of that transition from SIC to NICS, we look at this is because we're getting so many parts of the ordinance, it makes sense right now to take three zoning districts out of the county ordinance that have never been used in my almost eighteen years with the county. AC ten, which is a zoning district that's duplicative of agricultural conservation, which is very AC. And the I, which is an mixed-use industrial district, which actually is better served by using a planned development ordinance. And the central business district, because the county doesn't have one. It's really a city district, and we have looked at other parts of the county to see if a CDB designation, the right to design would make sense anywhere else in the county, and it is that one. We're also looking at removing provisions in the ordinance tomorrow, Article one, that deal with design review and historic districts and overlay districts. We do not have within the county any of those authorization procedures. And then any non-susceptible revision, basic based to naming and coding references we're talking about without classification, industry changes. And then so clarity and ease of use changes. Planning commission did recommend approval of this request. It does request that need for modernization of our code. It also allows for removal of several internal inconsistencies with the law ordinance. We do have a lot of moving parts in this request, and my recommendation would be that before we get to the public county, we can have a land use community discussion so that we can further explain sorry, between staff and councils, that's how a photograph of what's being changed. I have to answer any questions you may have?
I appreciate you doing the land use, because I have some more questions. I'll hold off to that. I'm gonna go ahead and do the side.
And I do have a question.
Okay, it's moved, probably seconded, discussion.
Yes, and thank you for mentioning that you will, you know, bring it before a committee so that we can talk more about the land use. And what sort of sparked my interest and raised a little flag was the central business district. You are replacing some of this in the unincorporated areas of the county. And you know, when we think about those small municipalities, there, there are potentials, I would think, in those areas, you know, as time progresses. And I would hate to undo a potential for them in, in this whole scheme of things.
The way that the central business district test is actually written in the county ordinance right now was really centrally designed specifically around downtown Sumter. And so the form and design and focus and setbacks in that district really aren't appropriate for the traditional form and design of things that we say, for instance, in Rembert or in the Del Sol community, because it was really a layout for a mean street design. One of the things that we would like to look at as a planning staff as time permits is actually some small area plans for those unincorporated enclaves and possibly develop some either overlay districts or look at rezoning some of those properties to appropriate commercial designations to allow those all to be there to exist in a better form and a better design. Because as you know, most of the county was painted with an agricultural brush in nineteen ninety-nine. And we've been dialing back over the years, trying to figure out a good way to fix some of that. And I think it's going to require some small area plans and possibly creating some districts or some overlays specifically for those areas. So when I say that we're removing those districts from the ordinance, we're not going to remove the placeholders for a new district to be put in that spot. We're proposing that it helds an open space as just unassigned right now. So the lettering will go away. It'll just, it'll be a placeholder. But we did look at whether the central business district form design makes sense anywhere else in the county. In that particular district, the way it's written, it really just doesn't.
Okay, I just don't want it to, you know, be overlooked and, you know, the reality of what we're doing today could affect our, our future and those who, our posterity, those who are coming behind us.
Any other questions or comments? And all in favor of having first reading on ordinance amendment twenty-two twelve, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading passed. Next item on the agenda is RZ twenty-three eleven, third reading.
There have been no changes to this request. It's seconded.
Move third reading. Second, then move it properly seconded in the discussion. All in favor? All in favor of aye. All opposed. Third reading of RZ twenty-three eleven passed. Next item on the agenda is discussion of possible actions concerning court call for Sumter County Council meetings. Mr. Bayton, you have a call.
Hi, Ms. Tim. I'll call this, well, put this item on the agenda because I think it was necessary for us to discuss what went on at our last meeting. However, before I get into that, there was a discussion about, in a special meeting we called today to talk about this, there was a statement made about council meeting in two thousand and twelve. During that time in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, I was the executive director of Sumter, Sumter County Council. That was the most, two greatest years in the county's history. Two greatest years in the county's history. First, in two thousand and eleven, we was able to attract company on top, which was a five-hundred-million-dollar investment, created one-thousand-six-hundred jobs paying above minimum, uh, minimum income. And I don't want to boast, but that deal was shaky. And at the end, I had to go out and negotiate the last bit of land so we wouldn't lose that project. And the reason why I was able to negotiate when other people failed was because I was the last. And I knew the diversity, diversity that that deal made. Twenty-twelve, the county had one of the best financial situations it ever had. And their bond rating was rated the highest it has ever been. That's my two years. Now, in twenty-twelve, we mentioned about the council meeting regarding the school millage. Because we had many people who wanted to attend, about three hundred attended that meeting, we held it at the Central Carolina Technical College on Main Street, Versus Center. At that time, I did not, knowing it was contentious meeting, and it was a very crowded meeting attendance, I did not address people and tell them what they could say and what they could not say. Also, I did not tell them that they had to sign in. The deal I made with my other cohorts from county council was that we were gonna allow everyone who wanted to speak to speak because we did not want anyone to walk out of that meeting and say they were not a One of the biggest issues was that the school district asked for thirteen meals. And the public, not necessarily the public, the white business industry, let's be clear, the white business industry consisting of chamber members, majority, did not want to give the school district a dime. They wrote letters to me personally, chamber won't let us submit, business people won't let us submit. And they said, we do not want to give the school a penny because they need to learn how to manage their money. They need to learn how to make do with what they got. Well, the gentleman that came on as superintendent was from Atlanta, Mr. Randolph Bond. He came on, and when he assumed the superintendent position for the new consolidated school district, he inherited a five-point-five-million-dollar deficit. He came in under the government, and he couldn't even make payroll. So he had to go back to two thousand and eleven, reduce positions, consolidate positions, put people on furlough. And of course, everyone talked about, oh, he's a bad manager. But he had to do that because he did not have the money to make payroll. So when he came in in two thousand and twelve and asked county council for thirteen meals, the chairman of the school board, Mr. Larry Addison, had already topped the minutes thirteen. We know we're not gonna get thirteen meals. But we at least would like to get six, at least six. Now, this council only had the prerogative at the time to give five meals to the majority vote, four votes. But to get the six meals, we needed to get one person to come and join us, a Republican, to come and join us. They refused. They refused. So we ended up, the four majority black Democrats gave the school district five meals. Now, I had an individual to approach me, and he said, Councilor Bayton, we don't want to give the school anything. They need to learn how to manage their money. I looked at him, and I said, you expect me, a black man, to tell this black man who came in and inherited a five-million-dollar deficit, who represented a district, school district, that was majority black and low income, you are telling me that you want me to vote a distance man? And here he is, coming in, saying, I want to move from good to great. I want to take this district from the bottom, which it was in, the bottom twenty-five percent, to the top, to the top twenty-five percent. But you're coming in and the people in this community, business people, white business people, telling me not to give him a dime. You need to know the truth behind this. See, there are things that people don't want to talk about, but I talk about. And the reason why I can talk about them is because I don't depend on anyone for my livelihood. I'm self-dependent, independent. I don't leave anyone. I don't regret for anyone looking to come behind me. So here we are. Now, let me say, I never told the people that they had to sign in, the majority white people who wanted to speak. You can reference the item. I know the item lady's here. Please go back and read the minutes of the meeting. You can do that. So last week, it was another contentious situation. The school board wanted to request twelve-point-nine meals because that's what the state Department of Revenue, Public Affairs, said they were entitled to under law, South Carolina Act three eighty-eight, they asked for that money. So they came to court council. But last week, there were majority black folks. Last week, our chairman felt that he had to set some rules for this ordinance. These are ten minutes. He had to tell them things like, you can't talk to each other. You can't make statements. And also, he told them that if you want to speak, you have to sign in. Now, let me tell you, we don't do that. We wouldn't happen in doing that, having people sign in. We've had a lot of contentious meetings, rezoning meetings, majority of white people in here. We never told them they had to sign in to talk. But he told these people that they had to sign in to talk. Now, I'm gonna read the statement to you now, so you're done. As a member of Sumter County Council since January two thousand and five, I am highly concerned about the current negative image I am highly concerned about the current negative image of this council. Before the regular meeting on Tuesday, June 27, Chairman McCain addressed the people in attendance, mostly black. He outlined what conduct and behavior must be displayed by the attendees during the meeting. Also, anyone who wanted to address county council during the public dinner section of the agenda must sign their name to a signature. In my opinion, and the comments made to me after the meeting by many people in attendance, they felt disrespected by the rules they were told to follow. I and them felt that Chairman McCain talked to them as if they were immature, unruly children. In my opinion, asking people who wanted to speak to sign a roster was not a policy of standard practice at our council meeting. We didn't always do that. County council had many zoning issues that were highly contentious. However, people, mostly white, were not required to sign a roster before speaking defense. In the last four years, I have been openly attacked, openly attacked. Vice Chairman Byrd blamed me in front of the Suffolk School District Superintendent and Chairman of the Board of Trustees for the school not receiving their millage request. When I decided, based on law, based on advice from the Ethics Commission, based on advice from our county attorney, Jonathan Brown, that I should not vote in that vote that time because I was in litigation. My daughter was in litigation against the school district. And I was told by the Ethics Commission, "It would be best that you don't vote for the school millage, or the school budget." So guess what? It was tied 3 to 3. Three Republicans voted for it, three Democrats voted for it. But they accused me, because I refused myself that I was the blame for the school district not getting their money. Now, my colleague on council openly said that to me in a public meeting in front of the superintendent, Martin Knox, and Ms. Jackson, who was the chairman of the trustee board. Openly said that. I sit back and look, and I told him that I was told that I could not vote. And I was gonna uphold my integrity to not do that. But I was accused, because I followed the law and refused myself that the school district didn't get their money that year, and the vote was 3-3. Not saying then, that all of the three Republicans voted against the vote. You know, but I was the blame, because I had to refuse myself. Also, Chairman McCain refrained me in the South Carolina item regarding the two meals given to the Suffolk School District, two meals. He said the superintendent personally had a conversation with him and asked for just two meals, for that year, the year before, and the coming year. When Dr. Martin Knox came before us, I looked at her and I said, "You know, Dr. Martin Knox, who disappointed you?" I said, "Here I am, fighting for every dime you are entitled to. And you are making deals behind my back." And that's when she openly said, "Mr. Bateman, I wanna clear this up. At no time did I make a decision on my board that we wanted two meals with anyone." I thanked her, I said, "Because I'm new to the people." And I'm for the people, because I substituted that school for seven years. I got to meet those kids. And I'm a licensed master social worker, still is today. And I talk to those kids. And I saw how they wanted to improve their life, did things done. And I thought of school system. I supported their school system. I became the top substitute for the career center. And I got to know those kids real good. And I knew that they were the future of Suffolk County. Because one of the things that we say, "Education is the foundation of economic development." And our workforce is gonna come from, not private schools, it's gonna come from the public school. Now, who says that there's no such thing as systemic racism? If you believe that, you believe in the Easter Bunny. And the Easter Bunny bringing you eggs. Systemic racism is loud and well in this county. If I'm wrong, then 100 courtesies, male, female, black, white, young, old, all denominations in this county, 100 of them are also wrong. Because they said that systemic racism is a sin and that systemic racism exists in Suffolk County. Now, when you look at the village, my colleagues love to come up with a reason not to give a school money. This year, they got master budget, big budget, reserve fund. They can get it out of there. Now, our people who work for their school, the one we depend on, the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, the people who clean up the bathroom behind these chairs, they didn't pay slave wages, 15, 16, 17 thousand dollars a year. Come on, man, who can live off that? But here's what we did. We, as a council, we said that on our budget, that we're gonna make sure that no county employee makes under $25,000. And we're gonna put the money in there to raise those salaries that are under $25,000. We were saying that that is an acceptable standard of living in this county. That's what we said, this council. But it doesn't apply to anyone. It doesn't apply to employees who's working at the school district. 1,585 of them who make under $25,000 a year. And they came in and said, talking with the chief finance, Mr. Chairman, I said, "How much will it cost to bring those people's salary up?" She said, "That's from Bateman, it's about $4,200,000." Now, we had an opportunity to give them some of that money in the millage request. But guess what? We decided to give them nothing. Because we kept saying, "Oh, they got money, they got money, they got money. 'Cause they built this up this year, this year, this year, now they got money." You know what? That's the same thing they've been telling them when they didn't have a dime, when they had a deficit. When Dr. Bonham came, and they had a $5.5 million deficit, where was he gonna get the money from? But they voted against him. They voted against giving them money. So they've been voting against giving this school district money ever since. Now, you wanna know what the definition of systemic racism is? It's a practice where one group is treated fairly and favorably and enjoy everything, while the other group is low income, don't get anything, and is based on race. Go look it up. Read what's systemic racism, and you will see. And they wanna sit back and tell me, call me a racist. I'm the racist. I'm the racist because I believe in equal opportunity and treatment. I served 27 years in the military. I was gonna give my life, whatever it had. Left my door for a while to go serve. I was willing to give my life for this country. I'm sitting here now, 100% disabled, triple bypass surgery. Because I went to a foreign country to serve my country. Because I believe in equal opportunity and treatment for everyone. And we are not treating the people in this county, the black people, we're not treating them fairly. And I don't mind standing up, shouting on the top of this building, that systemic racism is loud and well. And if I'm wrong, then 100 courtesies in this county who put out an anti-statement about racism is wrong too. They're wrong. So that's my statement. And I'm not gonna say the last words that I put in this statement. I'm gonna leave that out now. And I'm gonna let you be the judge. I'm gonna let you be the judge. Look around you. Look at the majority, you're in here black. Look around you, and you tell me that the black people in this county is enjoying a good standard of living like everyone else. But yet, every morning when their kids get up and go to school, they go to what they call a Title I school. A Title I school is where the income for the parents is low income, and they need special assistance. 16 of our 24 school districts, schools, are Title I schools. Where the kids go in, in the morning, so that they can eat. Eat so that they can concentrate on the rest of their classes now. But you know what? Right now, we can't even get them to school on time. We don't even have enough bus drivers paying them enough salary so that we can get them to school. Kids are standing at the bus stop 9:00 and 9:30 in the morning, waiting for a bus to get to school. And when they get there, the meal's over. That's what we got. In this county, this council wanna keep denying the school money? They don't care about the employees who work there and their standard of living? And they don't care about the quality of education of black kids and, well, there's low-income white kids in this community? Now, call me a racist every morning. I wear that badge proudly. But I'm not gonna sit back, as a black man, and see black people being treated unfairly in this county. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Here, what else, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. So the notice for the special meeting, which was the meeting before the meeting, how was the information on that disseminated?
It was disseminated the same way that the question got put on the agenda by Mr. Bateman.
It wasn't on the screen downstairs? The item didn't report? Wasn't on the website?
Did the item report, Mr. Bateman? It was on the agenda?
It's on the website.
It wasn't earlier?
Excuse me, Ms. Blaney gave it to me. It goes on the website.
Oh, Mr. Nixon, it's not appropriate for Mr. Perry to respond to council. So could you please address that?
Well, he's trying to address the question, and I guess expedite answer.
So then the question needs to be addressed.
You asked a lot.
As the Assistant County Administrator, we should not be addressed by staff.
No, sir.
Other than you or Miss Dennis.
That's correct, sir. We'll straighten that out. If you would like to make the request, I mean, and I'll respond. Yes, sir.
So it wasn't early? And I'm just curious about that. I'm even curious about why there was a meeting before the meeting?
Well, you came in a little bit late in the meeting. And I had explained at the beginning what I was trying to accomplish. There seems to be a question that what I did was somehow nefarious. I explained that at 10 o'clock, on the mornings of council meetings, I meet Mr. Nixon, our administrator, and staff to include Ms. Blending and our attorney. I explained that we were told to expect a very large crowd. I asked Ms. Blending what has been done in the past to try and expedite the meeting, and that's how that came about. I did not come out with that statement, um, request to sign in, in a vacuum. I requested the help of staff, and that's what was recommended. And that's what I explained at the beginning of the meeting, which you missed.
So I think you are aware by now, through demonstration of the audience's applause, maybe you got some communications, maybe not. I did. I got a lot of communications about how disrespected people felt at our last meeting. Not only for council's refusal to unanimously adopt and allow people to speak on this issue, because it is an important issue. Because anytime a janitor at Buc-E's up in Florence is making more than a teacher, that's a serious issue, particularly with the status of our school. There's also a serious issue when the auditor told us that instead of the two months reserves, we need four months reserves. It's a serious issue, because the school district came in here and told us they needed to fund a retention plan and other plans. They laid it out. The most complete budget I have seen since I have been on council. Not only did we refuse them, their request, which we refused since 2016, we refused to give them anything. And then when they don't perform like we want them to perform, we run to the legislative delegation and say, "We wanna redraw the lines so we can get more control." Now, the control has been gotten. We have a new administration. But yet, no help for the public schools. We had one council member express that he worked at a public school and demonstrated that he was very knowledgeable about these things. I went to that same public school. It was almost as if he was saying he was doing folks a favor to work at that public school. I went to the same public school. And I got very good education. And I think during my entire tenure in public school, minus two, all of the teachers that taught me looked like me. And so I take great exception to someone implying, suggesting, in my opinion, that there was a favor done by them working with these people. The second thing is indicating that he knows them better than anybody else. You know, folks have a tendency to do that when they spend a little time around people. And I find that offensive. I also found it offensive the way the folks are treated in this room. I found it offensive, Mr. Chairman, during the whole meeting, every time an action took place, there was somebody in your ear whispering. And I can show it to you on the video, or you can go back and look at it yourself. Not only did I see it, I heard it. I'm two people down from you. And the comments were not nice comments. I'll repeat them if you'd like for me to repeat them. And the comments were not nice comments, I'll repeat them if you'd like for me to repeat them, but I don't think you want me to. This is not what we should be doing. But then we're gonna turn around and we're gonna come back and ask for money for Patriot Park. We're gonna come back and ask for money for Shop Pop. Gonna pump up the Opera House, the Tennis Center, everything else, we don't wanna do any roads. People in the rural area are suffering. Can't even get to the doctor because they can't get out their roads because of what the county did in the nineteen-nineties. Shut 'em down, don't want any more roads. And those people look like me. But we're gonna turn right around and ask them to support a penny tax. Now, in the back, which is where y'all like to talk, in the back, there was a comment made by a councilman that he talked to several people who told him that he did exactly right. I wonder if there were some of those people who can't get out their roads? I wonder if it was some of those people where every time they drive out their road, they're fearful that their tire is gonna bust? People on oxygen who can't be connected with emergency services? When are we gonna help those people? We got a totally new school district, new superintendent, new top staff. Y'all have expanded the board like you want it, and you still don't wanna give kids any money. We're giving private schools money now. But we don't wanna fund education, but yet, we wanna push these businesses out and pump them up into public so they say, oh, we need our kids to be educated, and it's not happening, blah, blah, blah. Well, I wonder why? Teachers are struggling, they can't even make ends meet. At least the General Assembly has enough sense to engage and improve their salary and do some other things. But clearly, that message has not gone down to the county level. I am embarrassed how my people were treated when they were here. Comments about no lengthy conversation is gonna change the outcome. What do you mean? We are public officials. And if we get information that should change our opinion, then we should operate that way. But to come in with that attitude is completely inappropriate. And we should be ashamed. Mr. Chairman, I'm done.
Anyone else?
Orders, number twenty-three-nine-eight-nine.
Mr. Chairman, the third reading on the orders to approve a copy of the sale of property located at fourteen Law Range. Again, price is a hundred thousand dollars, and so, as is the potential for the national or federal um, period expired due outside. No changes in fact. I have removed the property, seconded on behalf, third reading on order, number twenty-three-nine-eight-nine. Any discussion? Very numbers are available, please say aye. On this twenty-three-nine-eight-nine passed. Committee reports, as was stated earlier, we did have a special meeting, my intention was to explain how and why things transpired as they did, did that. No action was taken. Next items, report from council members on other meetings, trainees and our conference.
Mutual reports. The High Hills AME Church will be celebrating its one-hundred-and-forty-seventh anniversary this weekend. And they have asked me to be the guest speaker during the morning service, and I want to publicly congratulate them on their efforts. As you know, the AME Church is present today as a result of great adversity when they first began. They began during the Civil War period when it was very uncertain for folks who looked like me to engage in any religious activity. And frankly, not much activity at all. But they have survived and are thriving, and I wanna congratulate them on their efforts and their one-hundred-and-forty-seventh anniversary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mutual reports, Mr. Chairman, I have a report on the area I had placed. Um, the Sumter branch of the NAACP had their Freedom Fund banquet meeting. And we discussed the upcoming meeting, it's gonna be November. But I would like to make sure that we get representation from this council. It's okay for you Republicans to come to the banquet. We're not gonna scare you, we're not gonna chase you away, but we have this annual banquet. Even you, Mr. Chairman, it's okay if you come to the Freedom Fund banquet. We have this banquet. And that's how we get along. The mayor comes, Senator Vampirine comes, they're welcome. But they're welcome, everybody's welcome to the Freedom Fund banquet. But I would like to see, other than me, Ms. Councilwoman McGee and Councilwoman Washington, I would like to see you four at World Freedom Fund banquet. Not that I'd like to see all of you, I haven't seen you there yet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Mutual reports, Mr. Chairman. In your package is the June fourteenth meeting of the Board of Solan Appeals, which will be, um, I said, June, July twelfth, which is tomorrow. And also, one of the other things that's really exciting for the county is the, um, ribbon cutting for the new book appeal, which goes throughout Sumter County. And council members, I've spoken with you a couple of times about the annual conference. Please get with me, but I do know that Mr. Washington should be graduating from the institute classes. And, um, there may be some other things coming down the line. Additionally, Ms. um, Melanie, Melanie Colley that used to work for the county, she's now over the state arts. And there will be an art in the park on August the twelfth, and it's going to be at Sumter. Who are you and a council member wanting to go, let me know. That's it.
County Administrator?
No reports, sir, thank you.
Coming onto the public comment portion of our agenda, citizens desiring to speak to and public comment are limited to up to three minutes. Comments may remain to the chair of Sumter County Council. If there are any questions, they will be addressed, answered, or meeting. Public comment portion of our agenda is open, anyone wishing to speak, council. Please proceed to report and state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Dr. Elaine Brunson, president of the
Okay, I'm sorry. It's me. Just a minute, I'll get straight in a second.
That's a little scary for me.
Okay, go ahead.
Anyways, um, star president of the startup Sumter Black Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the chamber, we would like to thank the county for sending our rep back in 2021 to our minority procurement program. However, since 2021, we've had challenges getting the county out for further participation. We have noticed that the county has begun to do a lot more with economic development, renovations and excavations throughout the county. And we would like the opportunity to have the Sumter County, uh, pretend, uh, excuse me, attend our 2023 program for procurement, which will be at Morris College on November third during their annual business week program. We would love to have the transparency of Sumter County, as we do currently with the city of Sumter, Shaw Air Force Base, and our other federal partners. Transparency from the county will include an allotted annual proposed budget for procurement and also transferred transparency in the set aside that you guys have allotted to minority businesses located in Sumter County. Also, we would like to know who is the minority certifier of record in the Sumter County Administration? Uh, like I said, um, we're now having issues with communication when trying to reach out to the county administration asking for further participation, and so, I would like to know who can I speak to to have transparency from the county in your procurement procedures at our November third procurement program meeting?
Thank you, Ms. Brunson.
Uh, who are our contact?
We'll get you after the meeting.
Oh, okay, thank you, for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, council members. I'm here today because for the first time since nineteen ninety-six, the NAACP South Carolina State Conference is having their convention here in Sumter, October twelfth through fifteenth. And I've heard the embarrassing things going on from council people. And I guess I can get on some of that with the hotels and meeting space here in Sumter. Hotel space. They looked it up and they asked, what's your organization, and the minute we said NAACP, I was just jacked up. And I'm just sick and tired of being sick and tired. Never being fair. We're not asking for anything free, we're willing to pay our way. I wanna show Sumter off. That is all is my home, Sumter County. And at this point in time, at this particular time, whatever time that clock has, I'm embarrassed for Sumter at those hotels. And I really hate to bring all these people here from around the state and probably out of state with our national people. I'm embarrassed to bring them here, but we were assigned this over seven or eight years ago, I think, for this year. The discriminatory practices is loud in Sumter. And it's embarrassing. And I don't know what our next step is going to be as it relates to the convention and the people coming here. It's really, really, really embarrassing. The only Christian accommodations is through the great Trinity Missionary Baptist Church for our meeting space because hotels don't have meeting space. They have no recommendations and no suggestions. They're giving out rates until NAACP is mentioned. This is not anything somebody told me, ladies and gentlemen. I dealt with this myself. My comments, thank you all, honor your time, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Gilmore. Anyone else wish to speak to the council?
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Dr. Gloria DeLestine, for the record.
Yeah, can you speak up just a little bit, please?
My name is Dr. Gloria DeLestine. One thing that I notice is that if you look around this room, I'm a retired military, thirty-four years of life, almost in twenty-three days. I'm not from Sumter County. I recently moved here two years ago, another district. But to hear all of the things that's going on with the schools is baffling to me. I don't have any children in the school, I don't have any, any connections with the school except the children that I just got through working with for the last six weeks at a summer camp program. Children, need whatever it is that the school board is asking for. I have a question for you. Which one of you made twenty-five thousand dollars a year? Which one of you? Which one of you can live on the twenty-five thousand dollars a year? Which one? Raise your hands if you can live on the twenty-five thousand dollars a year. I certainly can't. Why is it so hard for us to give quality teachers to teach our children quality education? I ran into a teacher the other day, I didn't know whether he was there to teach the children or recruit the children because he talked like a man but switched like a girl. So, what are we doing for our children? We're just giving them anything, we throwing them out to the wolves because you won't vote for them to have a quality education. How can you live with yourself? How can you sleep at night? What God do you serve? That makes you do this to the children? It's not about the people, it's the children that we are infecting. It's the children! And when we dismiss the children, we dismiss the whole damn country.
Amen.
How can you? Look at yourselves. Look at, look at you, I mean, you have no concern but nobody but you. And the businesses? Without the children, there won't be no businesses because they're all gonna die. And those children are what we gonna have left. And if we don't give them a quality education today, we won't have any of them, as direct as you.
Good evening, uh, councilman, Mr. Chairman, um, my name is Myra Washington, I live in District One. I debated whether or not to make comments tonight, I did put my name on the sign and she just in case I was going to be required. Um, nefarious, that is a word that the chairman of this council, uh, used in the special meeting prior, that started at five-thirty just prior to this meeting. And that's an interesting word, it means evil, wicked, criminal, malicious. And it's a word this chairman used repeatedly during that meeting, stating that his, the actions that he took two weeks ago were not nefarious. Well, that meeting, um, was not, uh, made known to the public. I was able to attend because my husband is on council, so I was aware of the meeting that way. And I have the screenshots from the Sumter item, this county's website, including the agenda page, the calendar page, um, in addition to the calendar page, in addition to, what were the other sources? That should clearly show even prior, oh, the television screen downstairs, it was not on there. Only the six o'clock agenda meeting. And interestingly, the chairman made it clear at the onset of the special county council meeting that he wanted that opportunity to talk amongst yourselves, to clear the air outside of the view of this public. Well, again, we go back to that word nefarious. There was something nefarious about that meeting just prior to this meeting because the public was not notified according to the Freedom of Information Act as required. And let's see, I have one other point. As far as decorum goes, you call a special meeting. I would think that if you call a special meeting, that you do that because there is an extenuating circumstance. Something special has come up. I would think that something special is deserving of time and attention. Thirty minutes prior to the start of this meeting, I don't think was a serious endeavor to take on decorum, which is completely lacking by this council. I observe at least four of you consistently. You don't listen to whoever is speaking. Your heads are down. You're on your phones. I think Mr. Baker might be on his phone right now. He took a phone call and went out. That's poor decorum. The facial expressions, the wringing of your hands, and shaking of your head. I mean, that does not decorum. You elude or teach decorum by exemplifying it. That's not happening with the majority, now the majority of this council. Let's see, we covered that. You said, you know, it's important to stick to the agenda. Well, you know, you didn't stick to the agenda at the special meeting. At least I did not hear you approve the agenda for that meeting. After the indication by Ms. McGaney, you went straight into explaining why you had called this meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Anyone else wishing to speak to council?
Yes. One quick thing. I'm Alexandra Baten, actually Dr. Alexandra Baten. I am councilman Baten's daughter. He mentioned, of course, he mentioned my name. So I guess in the efforts of transparency, I'm the one who had the lawsuit against the school district. I have the sheriff's office, and both of those were settled. But one thing you don't know about my father's dedication. And it brings me to tears because in two thousand and eleven, when he was out going door to door trying to get cotton tire up for the county and during the ceremony. People don't know, I was in Cheneal Hospital for eight days in critical condition. I had twelve blood clots in both lungs. I was almost dying. But yet, he's so dedicated to Sumter that he did his job. And after everything, that he would do something, he would come to the hospital and sit with me before visiting hours. And, and, and he felt guilty because he wasn't there with me all the time and he was out working. I said, no, Dad. I said, you have to do what you have to do. Don't feel guilty. Do what you have to do. And I'm just so proud of him because he went out there and he did the job. He stood on that stage. He represented the county well, not knowing if he was going to leave there and his daughter was going to be dead. Because there were a few times when he did get calls that he had to rush up there because I had passed out and things. So that's to Mr. Baker. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. May I speak to you? May I speak to you, council? Just for councils, I feel obligated to say one thing. When I got the information that you wanted the meeting, I am required by law, and I'm Mr. Brian always try to help me on what I need to do. But for the thirty-two years that I've been here, I have not set out an agenda, deliberately not set out an agenda. The agenda was sent out about three forty-five or something of that sort. I am sorry that anyone did not see it, that the item may not have published it or the gentleman right here. But I have an email list, just so if I didn't know. And you'll tell me who's the last person I just put on it. That has over three hundred people on that list. And I'm sorry you didn't, some of the other people in the audience, that they did not get it. But I set out the agenda. I had to do it in twenty-four hours per grain of information. So I apologize for whoever did not get it, but I did what my council member asked me to do on both of you. And I'll stop talking now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brunson. Anyone else wanting to speak to council?
Evening, everyone. Is that you? I'm not here about roads tonight. I'd like to thank what's been done so far. But I came to agree, to disagree, to agree. Mr. Washington was speaking. I almost cried. I almost cried because it's, it's the truth. When the sister was speaking, I wanted to cry. I wanted to throw up my face because it's the truth. The things that we go through and who's important and who's not. The children, I talked about it before, the children are so important to us. But they're not being taught anything that's going to help them. They're becoming tools. The little girls over by the door of the sock will make a biscuit. Or the women in the dress, they don't know anything about cooking. Only the nurses have been taken out of the schools. You've got people that have come here and advertised their filth in the name of freedom of speech. And it's okay to go along with it as long as you don't sabotage my children. As long as you don't put your hands on his kid. But we all go along with it. And that's about money. That's where the vote is. And it's not how we're being black because you don't have a choice. But what's hard is for nobody to see it and recognize it. Because everybody's not black. Everybody's not going through the same thing. But we need to start somewhere. Is it the teachers? Is it the parents? If the parents don't have the knowledge and understanding of anything, how are they going to teach? Everybody doesn't get a good education. Everybody doesn't get a full curriculum. I think in rich in the county, all the children, I don't even know where you, it totally doesn't matter. All the children that go to school, their free lunch and breakfasts. Why? They're the people who are late. For all the children here, if they can't get to school on time, they're dead now. They didn't have to get all this lunchtime. And they don't like the food that they're being fed. It's like slave food, some of the slots that they get. Everybody doesn't eat corn. Everybody don't want cornbread. Everybody likes pork. My children don't eat pork unless there's nothing else for them to eat. Unless there's nothing else for them to eat. That's the only way I eat to save my life, and I'd rather die. Like I said, it's sad, but it's got to start someplace.
Matthew, state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lorraine Muhammad.
Okay, Ms. Muhammad. Anyone else wishing to speak to council?
You're the councilman. My name is Mrs. Musa. I've been here on a couple occasions concerning one of those roads. And then we down there. Obviously, recently, it's an empty entry, but only end of. I spoke about it. And they're thankful. The community and neighborhood is thankful because there has been a patch repair on the two worst parts of it. But that's not going to last. The next rainy, we're right back to square one. I brought around to the community and one of the gentlemen that lives there goes on petition, and most of the community has signed it. What I would like to know is who do I give it to? And who is going to be sure something is done about it? We understand how people feel. And I know, see, I've been there over twenty years, one of the first, how it was going to happen between Queen Chapel and four forty-nine. It's in dire need of repair. This is for crying out loud. This is for crying. What do we do? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brunson. Anyone else wishing to speak to council? Speaking for a gentleman.